It is 4:31 on Friday, the 15th. The Millville's Planning Board meeting. We have four members with us tonight. Justin Allen, Bill Coop, Brian Malali, and myself, Pamela Maloney. We have two items on our agenda tonight, and I'm hoping to get through these things fairly quickly. Going to start, because we have Richard Hertu on with us as well right now. And one item that we were supposed to discuss on Monday, I apologize, Richard. We did not have forum and could not open the meeting on Monday. But thank you for joining us tonight. We have to have a discussion about the release of the bond for Carriage Estates. All right. And so it looks like we have roughly $36,000 balance in the bond. Does that sound right, Richard?
Correct.
And we have that bond amount does need to cover the cost of the title search and legal fees incurred with moving the Carriage Estates over to being an accepted road. And I know Richard's looking to get the bond released as much as possible. The question is, we can release an amount to Richard that would leave enough behind to cover the costs of the title fees and the legal fees. All that being said, I don't have a sense for what that amount is. I'm not sure if anybody else does, Richard. If you have any ideas on that, or Brian, if you know anything related to that.
I don't. I don't. I just know there's a bunch of fees out there that need to be paid.
Yep. Richard, did you have any? Do you have any idea of what's outstanding?
No, because I don't think we've ever done it in the past. That's why I sent you an email requesting a copy of the expenses that was charged on Carriage Estates 2 and Alfonso Estate. Since I was on the board at that time, I don't recall there being any deductions of any kind of expenses on those two subdivisions.
So I don't believe that it's...
Excuse me?
I don't believe it's a deduction. It shouldn't be a deduction. It should be paid by the owner.
The developer?
I understand, the developer. And then you would get back your full bond amount. I believe that's how it was done in the past. They had to pay fees into the, I'm going to call it the coffin. And some of that was for the road inspection. Some of it was for the attorney's fees. So they had, and I believe you had done some of that in the past too, paid into for like the road inspection. There was always money left over. So the account for that, the expenses were covered.
You're 100% right on that. But the expenses were deducted from fees submitted by the developer for engineering costs plus the initial application of a subdivision, which was $20,000 or $30,000, which was used to engineering fees, review the drawings. And as inspections came along, I had to put dollars into the account. And other developers would have to put dollars in the account to cover the inspections. I don't remember there being deducted from the bond. And that's why I asked for a copy of that from the other developers.
Yeah, it's not a deduction from the bond.
No.
It's money that would be put in to be spent. And to my understanding, there is no money there from you or your development to be spent. So the town is erring on the side of caution not to release the bond because there's still bills that are going to be due.
Exactly. So that's what it is. We're not looking to deduct it, but we're looking to hold over enough until those other bills get paid. And I'm trying to...
It's, you know, one hand, you know, you paying in and paying out and getting back. But it's just the right way to do it.
Right. I was just wondering, since it's been over four months since the town accepted the road, I was just curious how long that would take.
Yeah, I mean, I know that's not in our department.
Yeah. I'm not sure.
I mean...
You'd probably need to follow up with finance on that?
No, it'd be the Board of Selectmen, it'd be Peter. As he's the one who's probably dealing with Town Council.
Yeah, sorry, not the Finance Board. I meant the Finance Director, whoever's waiting for those invoices to come in. Because it's the amounts that we don't have, correct?
Right. And I believe those invoices will go to Peter, my Town Administrator.
Okay. But because I know that, so I guess we have two things we could be looking at here. We could just hold on to the bond until those bills are paid. But it's also my understanding that we could do a partial release of some of it and then do the other half once the bills are paid, or the other portion of it or something when the bills are paid, if that's amenable to anybody on the board, or if that was something that Richard would want to explore.
Well, I'm sure they're not $30,000. But I mean, do you even have a clue on what the expenses might be?
I don't. That's the piece of it that I'm not sure of what that looks like.
I just err on the side of caution because we have that one other development in town that the Planning Board, the town did not have enough money left in the bond or in there, and the developer walked away. And that is pretty much the only one out there now in limbo because it was never completed properly. And I'm sure that it's not that amount that needs to be cleared up, but...
Richard?
Yes?
Do you have an amount in mind, or are you saying you don't owe the town anything right now?
I have no clue since I don't, being on a planning board for over 30 something years, we didn't get involved with the, we'd have a meeting, we'd release the bond. The bond was released. As a matter of fact, for Alfonso, Brian, I made the motion and Brian seconded it. And I have the minutes of that meeting, and there was no discussion of anything being withheld. And in Carriage Estates 2, it was some sort of a performance bond that was released. Again, I was not privy to any expenses for title search and inspection by engineers. The engineer would never do the inspection unless it was sufficient amount to cover the expense of the engineer work. So we're talking title search and the lawyer. And again, I don't remember there being any discussions or fees discussed. And I have almost all of the minutes of the meeting, and there was no discussion of withholding anything on that.
Unfortunately, and we all know, at that time, we were in a better position with our Town Planner. We had somebody really doing our legwork, and they were the one collecting your fees, telling us what was in the kitty and what was being paid or needed to be paid. And to my knowledge, that's where all the, everything got paid out of. They knew, they had, they had a running tally of what was coming in for bills. Unfortunately, we don't...
Would that information be in the, like, Carriage Estates 2's folder? Expenses paid and withheld, or expenses charged to the developer?
I'm not sure.
I would hope so, but I can't say...
That was only like two years ago, and that was done while we were at the new location, at the American Legion Hall. So it wasn't done...
2017. Yeah, it was 2017.
So I had made a few requests to sit down with the Town Planner, to go over those folders. But because of the weather and the holidays, I'm hoping that can be accomplished relatively soon.
Yeah, it's just that we don't have, we have an interim planner right now, on an interim schedule right now.
I had made a appointment with Gabe to meet with him, but the last time, we had received like four or five inches of snow that day. And then the following week was Christmas. And so I corresponded with him, see, seeing you, that maybe after the holidays, we could get together on that.
Yeah. We just only have Gabe for another couple of weeks. So I would reach out to him soon and see if he can arrange that.
Okay.
So just getting back then to the bond. I mean, I think we're all in agreement that the fees that are outstanding are probably not going to come to that $36,000. But none of us feel comfortable knowing an amount that it would be okay to do a partial release. At least that's what I'm hearing.
Do you think the expenses or the cost would exceed $6,000?
I honestly don't have a sense for what the amount is.
Pam, have you had any correspondence or anything with Town Administrator, anything about this?
The only correspondence I have is informing, you know, kind of going through what we could do. And he was explaining that we could consider a partial, a partial release, but I don't have any numbers to base a partial release on. So I don't know if it's 1,000, I don't know if it's 10,000. So without having a sense of what the number is, I feel a little uncomfortable recommending a partial amount.
When is our next, when is our next meeting?
Our next meeting would be the, hold on. It'll be the 25th.
25th?
Yep.
Of January.
Yep.
Okay. Richard, would you be opposed to us trying to at least go to that point and have either a dollar amount, or maybe the fees will be paid by then, and we can release everything?
Sure.
We put you back on the agenda and, you know, at least get you a partial release, or hopefully, we can just put all of this to bed, as I was already hoping it was.
I don't have a problem waiting till the 25th, but I am requesting that I get an itemized bill when that bill is submitted. And I'm also asking that the legal fees does not include the activity that was done for the solar farm, because that application was, I believe the town received $40,000 on that, plus additional fees. So I'm hoping that activity with the Town Council on the special permit does not piggyback onto the development of the subdivision.
Yeah, it shouldn't. And I agree with you on that. It should not be in part of the subdivision.
Okay, then the 25th it is.
Thanks, Richard. We'll try to figure out what these costs are.
All right, thank you.
Make sure that he's on the agenda for the 25th.
Yep. All right. Thanks, Richard.
You're welcome.
All right. The other item on our list for tonight, oh, actually, one housekeeping item, but we have, and Gabe sent it over to everybody. There was the conditions for the modified special permit for Prospect Street that was sent out. And he did not receive any edits or requests from any of you. So he was going to move that forward. And I just wanted to make sure that that was the case, that everybody had a chance to look at it and send Gabe anything that was, that pointed out to you that that wasn't what we discussed.
Yeah, that to me was, I don't think that was put together properly.
Okay.
We don't even have the right names of streets on there. I don't know if the, I do know that the applicants weren't also notified. And I did take it upon myself and forwarded them what was being put in place because they're, you know, they asked about it. And I believe they sent out an email, Pam, to you and Gabe. I don't know if you received that also.
Yeah, I'm looking now to see if it's here. I do have an email from Rocco from earlier.
I saw that come through today, and it was, to me, that's the way it should be put together. Do I still think there are some things missing on that one? I agree on it. I guess I'm going to say, in my opinion, I think this needs to be revisited more in a better format, attached to the original decision.
Well, I agree. I kind of... Go ahead.
With the correct street names and defining everything for the facility. I mean, the marijuana usages should be on there, in my opinion, as it's just not, you know, retail, it's also cultivation and wholesale and all the above. I mean, we have to spell this out, in my opinion, properly.
Yes, it needs to look, it needs to look a lot like the one that we did for Garden Wonder. And I completely feel the same way. I think that we can work on getting the format of it done properly and having it attached to the special permit. I can even work on doing that piece of it myself. But I think what he, and this is not in a good format, but I think what he was looking at were the bullets itself, the pieces that were agreed upon that were special, the hours that we were talking about, the agreement about the fencing. I think that we needed to have something in there about the drive-through. And there are a few other items that I don't have in front of me right now.
I mean, I think that the plan they submitted needs, should be some, should be part of this, should be piggybacking it, added to the decision of the original site plan. Because who's to say they could turn around and do something different once we okay it? And not that I'm, I think they would, but I wasn't happy with the way that sheet we received about how it was presented to us.
Gotcha. And did you tell, did you send that information over to Gabe and have him work on that at all? Is that something he already has?
Well, he received the same thing you did today. But I mean, that's still, that's, in my opinion, work in progress. Did I reach out to Gabe? I did not.
Okay. Did anybody else send over any edits to Gabe that if I took this project over, I would need?
I did not.
All right. Okay.
Again, I mean, this is a minor modification. It's just spelling everything out. In my opinion, I'd like to see if we could get it inserted in here a lot better, again, by the 25th.
Yeah, I think we need to still have it as a memo. But I can put all the papers together, and I'll rewrite this. And again, I think our hours are almost up with Gabe. So something else we need to be considering. Okay. All right, I'll work on it.
What do we have him for? How long do we have him?
I think we have him through the end of this month. So one more meeting.
Okay.
All right. Because there's so many other things that are going on, I'll just take on this project to make sure that we have the hours and whatnot to have Gabe help Richard dig up the paperwork and stuff that he needs and get prepared for the 25th. All right. The last item on the list is to talk about the planner. So again, just reiterating, we're on a temporary contract with CMRPC for Gabe's services. I'll double check the dates on that, but I think it was just through the end of this month. It might actually be through the 29th. I'm just going to double check on that. But we have in front of us all is an intermunicipal agreement and a job description for a shared planner, working with towns of Oxbridge and Mendon, hoping to find some shared planner services. I know we've been kicking this around for a while. I collected, well, I sent everything out to everybody, and I asked for any feedback that you wanted to send over to CMRPC for their, for them to add in. I sent them a considerable list myself. They did add in everything that I asked for into the job description and into the intermunicipal agreement. I didn't get any feedback from you guys, so I don't know if you have any now. But the documents that you have, I sent over to the Board of Selectmen earlier this week. And I will be on their agenda next week to talk to them about trying to move that forward. But of course, we can't do that unless we agree on it. So tonight, I'm looking one last time to see if anybody has any input on this or if you feel that we could take a vote on moving forward with it.
Did they ever answer what would happen if one of the other towns needed to pull out of the agreement for some reason?
Believe this, they did. Let me pull it up.
I know, I think that was the only question I had.
Do you all have the documents, the final documents I sent over?
Yes.
I'm just, I had them add everything into the IMA, so I just want to get the exact language that we had them put in. So just give me a second, Justin.
Yeah, yeah.
Should any town terminate its participation, the remaining towns must negotiate a new division of ours and amend this contract. That is, that is the sub-piece under the statement. Any participating town may, by vote of its Board of Selectmen, terminate its participation under this agreement upon the provision that written notice thereof is provided to the other towns at least 30 days in advance.
Okay, so if I, all right, thank you for that. So if I read that correctly, if a town backs out, that's not Millville, we can't...
Then renegotiate a contract.
So we could conceivably be forced to pay for the balance? So let's say, let's say that, let's say that Oxbridge is currently scheduled to get 18 hours. And let's say that they back out. Mendon is at 16 hours and Millville's at 6. So Mendon and Millville would have to negotiate some kind of settlement to rebalance the hours?
Or we reduce the hours of the person, of the planner?
Okay, I don't, I don't see a planner sticking around. If Oxbridge decides to bow out, I don't see a planner, you know, staying for half the, for half the hours and half the salary.
Agreed. I mean, I imagine if any town backed out, you'd have to run, we'd be running the risk that the person would leave anyway.
Right. But worst case scenario is if we had to renegotiate, could we...
We could back out as well.
We dissolve it? Yeah, that's kind of our protection?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it's still, I think it's still our best path forward right now.
Agreed.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. The other thing that we talked about, and it might have been Chris, or maybe it was Bill that brought it up, was about what if we needed more hours? And then I did have them include into this agreement, at least for the first year, some language that said, let me just find it so I can read it to you directly. But basically, it gives us the ability to have up to 10 hours, and the other towns would concede some of their hours to us in order to make up for that if we can figure it out financially. It says here, if the town of Millville is able to increase their budget for these services, the towns agree to amend the agreement to allow for 10 hours to Millville, 13 to Mendon, 15 to Oxbridge.
I think that's a plus.
Yes.
I'm all for moving this forward. I think, Pam, you've done a lot of work on this, a lot of hours. And I believe this is our best plan of attack. And it's, I think we got some protection with it about backing out, moving hours forward, and all the above. It seems like the other towns are working with us for the time being with what we have.
Agreed. And, you know, there were some other things that were in here that I think can help us, but like, the payment structure is set so that the first payment isn't due till like August, I believe. So again, that gives us a little bit of wiggle room on trying to finagle the hours that we need versus the hours that we can currently afford. And I think moving this forward, we need to have a conversation about how do we, how do we move forward the fact that we need 10 hours, you know?
Yeah, we just have to err on the side of caution. From now, if we, when they hire until July 1st, we can't just get a bill in August for, from February till August. As the fiscal year ends, July 1st, we need to pay up until that point.
That's a good point, Brian. You can ask them to send us a bill earlier.
Pay for services. You can't cross the years with the budgets and the money. So I know, we're just going to err on the side of caution with that from...
You want me to request that we change the billing dates to be around our fiscal years, fiscal year? You want me to request that we change the billing dates to be around our fiscal years, fiscal year?
It should be, it, it, it should be, you know, we should be getting a bill um, at the end of June, right around July first, because you have fifteen days or two weeks uh, plus or minus to, uh, get your bills paid after the close of the fiscal year, so.
Okay.
We need to do that.
I'll send that along. Okay.
Um, so I don't know if we need a motion, or um, but I will make one, um, I make a motion that we move forward with the, um, shared Planner Agreement with Uxbridge and Menden. For becoming future of a shared Planner.
All right, Brian makes a motion.
I will second it.
Any discussion? I would say the only, the only thing I would say would be with the, with, if we can get the dates amended, um, for the billing, anyway, that, that would be the one pulled out, and I'll try to get that fixed up by Tuesday. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm going to move that forward, um, I'll ask that question of, of the folks from CMRPC. And I plan to be on the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Tuesday, they already have us on the agenda, if anybody else wants to join. Um, that's awesome, otherwise, I will update you on the twenty-fifth.
All right.
Um, just quickly, looking forward, so again, the next meeting is on the twenty-fifth, on the agenda, we'll have, um, Richard, and I'll try to figure out about those bills. Um, we'll have a shared Planner Agreement update. We'll have Prospect Street, is there any other items that you folks are anticipating for the twenty-first, twenty-fifth? We, we had planned to discuss the signed bylaw on this past Monday, I did not add that to tonight's agenda, since, since it is a, a Friday night. Do you want to add that to the twenty-fifth?
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Pam, can I ask a question on something?
Uh, sure.
The twenty-fifth, is that going to be at four-thirty or seven o'clock?
It'll be at six-thirty.
Oh, six-thirty, okay.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, all right, the other question is, for some ten, fifteen years of Planning Board had a Town Planner and had a Secretary, that had Natalie, uh, and she would post the minutes and uh, things on the website, is that something that the Board is able to obtain as a Secretary to just handle just the paperwork?
Richard, and it, it's something that we need to discuss, um, as we kind of figure out this whole Planner position, and how we're going to get things done.
Right, because that would take away some of the burden on the Planner, and it would take, uh, some of the uh, paperwork off of your shoulders to where, uh, the minutes would get posted on the website, and um, so it may be something you want to look into, because like I said, we had it for ten or fifteen years, we had a Secretary Natalie and various, uh, Planners.
Yeah, it, it is, it is something that's tough, um, just so you know, though, we, we do have minutes that are taken, and when the minutes get approved, they do get submitted. I just think that there's a backlog at Town Hall where it hasn't gotten added to the, to the website yet, but they are, everything's done and, and in order, it's just, um, I have noticed too, it's not online yet.
Okay, just thought of that, Ash, thank you.
Yeah, no, good point, thanks, Richard. All right, if there's nothing else that you guys want to discuss or add to the next agenda, I'll hear a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's five oh six, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You guys have a great weekend.